We started a joint regular committee meeting Thursday, September 19th, six o'clock PM. Members present, Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, Dan Meyer-Brohl, Bruce Struka, myself, Doug Poe, and Andrew Schock. We started a joint regular committee meeting, called order by SAT, at six o'clock PM. Do we have any public participation? Order of committee business, finance committee, start that at six oh one PM. Various appropriations, please.
Okay, I only actually have one appropriation of, this is in the general fund, Program One, security of persons and property, in the police department, $268.90 to materials and supplies, these were donations, this is a total of donations that go to Safety Town and Operation Hope. So, we just need to appropriate that since these donations came in.
Second.
We have the motion by Kevin, seconded by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Don't we're requesting a transfer, you want to speak to that, Jeff?
Sure. In the personal services line of the fire department, we have 50,000 allocated for retirement for this year, and I talked to the fire chief, and we have nobody kind of retired this year, so we would want to see about moving the 50,000 to the new equipment line in the fire department, so they can purchase some new battery-operated safety equipment, and outlet, this could be nut explained to you, but all of our stuff is like 30 years old, and I think it's all run by hydraulics, if I understand correctly, and this would be a great improvement for the fire department, so.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. The tool we, our current hydraulic tools are, what they call line tools, they have a gas engine, runs hydraulic pump, they run so many feet of line. Sometimes the gas engine can be hard to start, the new stuff we are looking at is battery-operated, and the battery technology's come a long way, we were, a few of us were kind of naysayers on batteries till we actually seen them, the old Ni-Cat batteries, they had a memory, not lasting, that's not now. We've, so far, we've looked at two, we've looked at Hurst E. Tools, and we've looked at Genesis, TNT was supposed to call it Schedule, they haven't in the last few weeks, so far as I'm concerned, they're, they're no longer in consideration. Majority of the guys, since what we have looked at, do like the Hurst. The Hurst, they're battery-operated, they have a preparatory, excuse me, battery, it's their battery, made for them, we're looking at getting an incentive, Mr. Wagner has, actually has the quotes, the tools that we are looking to get would be a set of cutters, similar to what we have now, a set of spreaders, similar to what we have now, a ram which extends to. I don't, actually don't have the actual length of it, but the ram is, one ram, was currently we have, three different ramps, depending on the size of the execution we need. We have small, medium, large, and actually I believe the large ram that we have right now is broke, based on, broke sometime last year, it's never been, never been replaced.
Are you saying ram?
Ram, yes, a hydraulic ram. Hooked in, it's what we use, the tools have mounting points on each end, the ram and the spreaders, the spreaders is also known as the jaws of life. The jaws of life is actually a Hurst term, naturally, they're the ones that coined that back in 1972, 1975, so actually, I believe that is their term, but it's always referred to as a jaws of life. That is the spreaders, it opens up like this, the ram is, they're basically like hydraulic cylinder, then open, then closes, there's holes on both ends, we have chain sets that we can use, use that actually to pull, like a steering wheel, we can hook the front bumper of some older vehicles, or find an anchor point on the front of the vehicle, you can hook the other end to the steering column, if you need to move the steering column, you activate the ram, and if you have it lengthened, you shorten it up, bring it back in, it will pull the steering column up. So it's, the old days of watching emergency, we would use the quarter power, the hydraulic hand tools, that was, that was the first step for fire service was, they had used the hand pump. The new ones, the new ones with the gas-powered hydraulic engine, or the S. engine ran hydraulic pump, these new ones are a battery, the battery, we were weary on the battery, because we know what happens with like, like the water pool we have, batteries get a memory, they don't last. These new batteries are lithium ion, and they're good for like 1,000 cycles. Now, when you put the battery in the charger, the brain is in the battery and not in the charger, so the battery will not take charge if it doesn't need charge. So if you use 2% of the battery, it's not going to charge, it has to get down to a certain percent before it actually cycles. We had Finley Fire come up with one of the gentlemen, that actually gave a training class on these tools, and we cut on the car for about two hours, and we only went down like one bar on this battery. Now, the battery he put in, that was actually dead by accident. We checked all the batteries, and for the few hour period, it went down a quarter battery. They have been tested, so they can, if you're on a car fire, and you have to get extra case money while the car is burning, the tools are water-resistant, they, I mean, they will, they said they've tested them with a guy using an issue recorder, which is standard line, flowing water, and a guy making cuts and using tools, so that the water is, actually doesn't hurt them. They will work underwater, I believe they say three feet. Irrelevant, my opinion, if we have an accident, somebody's in the water, I'll take a chance on using it to walk, if it ruins the tool, that's all. But, the tools, like I mentioned, the tools we have, they're 30 years old, they're here when the chief tells us here, this is long, same with the airbags, a lot of our equipment is getting old, and it needs replaced, so that's where the chief been talking to Mr. Wagner about moving the fire, and getting the items purchased. The only one thing that I failed to mention, the, in the Hurst, with the Hurst tools for Finley Fire, they have an attachment, which is called a strong arm, and this is similar to the rest of tools, it has attachment, so you can actually use them in the door jam, it's something they call rabbit attachment, it can fit in the door jam, we use for forced entry. That tool has its own battery, it's separate from the yellow ones, and that tool is actually fire-rated, it can be taken inside a burning structure, that we could actually use, if we have somebody trapped, we have to force another door inside the structure, that it will not hurt that battery, up to, it's got a time and temperature rating, but it is designed to be used inside a fire. And once you pop that attachment, you can pop that attachment off, and it turns into a, like a small pair of, like a small commie tool, which is what the, one of the other tools is called, which actually has a small set of spreaders, and then when you bring it closed, it actually has cutters, so it, that tool can do double duty.
So then that's what you want to use this 50,000 dollars for, is to purchase these tools and be passed around the people, and that we'll get copies of that for everybody if you want it.
The two quotes we have, for the price of larger quote, we can buy the same amount of equipment, plus another strong arm, plus a set of, we call a set of irons, which is, a set of irons is a halogen tool and an ax with a mount, we can actually buy the one product, or the one set, plus an extra tool, plus the other hand tools, for the, for B-10. So we actually have no set tools on that, because there's times that we've had to do forced entry, and we run into a point where, when we're on standby at the city, we're short on staff, we're on the way for an entry show up, it would give us an extra set of tools, that we can use for forced entry on the, on the handles.
I noticed Finley did not list, does Finley makes their own proprietary battery?
No, Finley is a, Finley Fire Equipment is a fire equipment sales.
Okay.
Mr. Wagner had actually come up with a name, actually comes to station, actually President CEO, actually come up, we talked about a truck, and we got our equipment, and some other stuff. But Hurst Tools, they have somebody that makes the battery for them.
That's what I was getting at, it looked like on the one from Genesis, Genesis uses a Milwaukee battery?
Genesis uses a Milwaukee battery.
Okay.
They use a 28 volt battery, which is basically kind of gone, it's not a normal battery anymore, but they still do make it. The TNT tools that I had looked at, which are, were even heavier than any of the other ones, actually use two Milwaukee batteries. The Hurst that we are, the majority of guys like, they are used by Detroit, they are used by FDNY, I actually went to race in Milwaukee a few weeks ago, tried to meet a guy that I know that works for FDNY on one of the rescues, and asked him, but he actually flown out to the Paul Bear funeral, so I didn't get a, you know, how they, how they like, so.
I just figured ultimately with them having their own batteries, probably better than using somebody else's.
So then all as we're looking for, then is permission to do this, we, we don't have to do anything else, do we? You know, just transfer the money from personal services over to that law director?
No, most of you do that?
Second.
First, Kevin, are you all in favor?
Aye.
So then is that money then appropriated to, or you're doing the transfer, the process?
That's part of the appropriation, so it just, it just moves through one category or another, it doesn't change the total appropriation.
Okay.
Okay, so that's all for finance.
Thank you.
Enjoy the new tools.
We haven't got them yet, but thank you, really appreciate it.
All right, guys, we're calling order at six thirteen. Non-conforming residential lots.
I don't really have any additional comment to at this point, just thought to make sure to be here in case you guys had any questions about it, but I'm fine with the way, Rob and I discussed the wording of this one, and I don't see any issues with it.
You might want to read this. Does it change, pardon?
Okay, it's modifying chapter 1151, final tour. Section E, this is the opening sentence, none of non-conforming use shall be enlarged, extended, reconstructed, or structurally altered except as follows. For section E, which is the amended edition, legal, legally non-conforming residential lots currently in zoning districts that do not permit single-family structures are permitted to install, build, or construct accessory structure provided that the accessory structure meets development standards for the adjacent or most proximate residential district, including the, that district's process for variance.
So we saw that issue, not on our most recent BZA meeting, but the one prior, both of those issues were what spurred me to approach you guys about this inconsistency, or whatever you want to refer to it as, but I, I think this would clear up that issue. While it may not fix all of them, we will still have the BZA variance process there for any of this that's not helped.
Yeah, that can alleviate a lot, I'm sorry, help, that can alleviate a lot of our, some unnecessary BZA meetings for simple structures that we have no objections to.
Go ahead.
Can you give me an example?
Yeah. At previous meeting, I supplied a case study, maybe not the previous meeting, but the first one I came talking about this, there was a property up on Gayus, he wanted to build a deck off the back of his house, his lot was 37 feet wide, the side yard setback for the general business district in which he is located is 20 feet for structures, so theoretically he would have had a negative developable space to build any accessory structure. In looking at it for primary residential structures, there was a provision to allow for the extension of those structures, provided they met the development standards for the most proximate residential district, if they were a commercial district, but there was no provision that allowed for that, for accessory structures, so I thought doing this would kind of repair that a little bit.
Right, because up there on Gayus Street, there's a doctor's office over there, and there's, yeah, so that's why it's probably general business right there.
And the other was right across the street here, in the neighborhood business district, we had another one at that same BZA hearing, same kind of concept, he would have had about two feet of developable space for accessory structure, it just, it just didn't make sense.
Don't use it all at once, right?
So, if there's.
This is the draft legislation.
Right, if there's no other.
Presented to full council.
No objections, can I entertain a motion for a test?
Second.
Okay, drive a second.
Second.
If there's no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close the post, same sign, close the post.
So we presented to full council, the next council?
Yes. All right, here we go with permanent signs in downtown business district. This is to modify our current joint ordinance of 1191.08, B, C, and H, B3, this is the general requirements, permanent signs for chapter 1191. It is amending section B, section C, and H, number three, so I'll read the amended part, and V, can be, and are awning signs, can be signs, shall be permitted in the DB, NB, GB, GI, LIC, and SU districts, and may be painted on an awning area or attached to a canopy or roof which protects beyond the building, provided that no part of the sign, such sign may extend above the roof line, canopy, or marquee. Canopy or marquee signs shall be minimum of 90 above ground level, and this is the amended part, in the downtown business district, can be signed, shall not extend more than 50% of the area from the base of the building to the curb. In section C, it states projecting signs, projecting signs shall be permitted in the DB, NB, GB, and LIC districts, provided such signs do not exceed, and this is the amended part, 20 square feet, it was 10 square feet, 12, 12, sorry, 12, is now 20, feet, square feet in size, and are placed not less than nine feet above the sidewalk or ground level, and project not more than six feet outward from the building face, and then goes down to section H, this was section C, now it's section H, number three, location, those part of any sign shall be placed in, over, or extend onto any public right-of-way, except, this is the amended part, except in the DB, downtown business district, or, or permanent wall, canopy, slash awning, and projecting signs. So those are the three amendments.
Okay, two questions, one is, I think for the law director, in section B, is the word exceed and the word extend, and we had, we had not discussed the word extend, would you interpret exceed meaning the same thing?
As I read that, what it, what it would indicate, would indicate that your intent is that the coverage area of the canopy sign is to be no more than 50% of the area.
So you would say that it would mean the same thing?
Well, no, it doesn't mean the same thing, trying to think of it.
Our intention was, if you had 10 feet from the building to the sidewalk, you could go out five feet, so I think, I know I think the word extend is what we discussed.
You mean the building to the curb, building to the curb, not the sidewalk.
That's what I meant.
Said sidewalk.
And I guess I saw it.
I know you did.
Yeah.
We didn't.
We meant the full width of the property.
Correct.
We're talking about.
But extending out to 50, by 50%.
50%, so I would think that the word exceed should be changed.
Should extend.
And then, Mr. Chairman, my other question was, we had discussed removing posts, and I don't see that anywhere.
Right, I don't see that either.
There was no motion made for that, but that, we didn't move that over, we have a request, whether we want to address that?
I thought we did make a motion, recite of.
Yeah, I think we did.
I didn't have that one, no, it's okay, but we can, we can do that though.
Where, where does that come?
That's in the definitions portion of the sign code, it would have to be amended under the definition of a canopy and awning sign, and whether that's specific to the downtown business district would probably be in addition to that definition.
Okay.
You want there to be no post?
Correct.
Yeah, correct.
No posts, ain't a canopy sign.
We have, we currently have two, two non-conforming businesses, current.
And then the RA.
But we don't want any more new ones. Well, one maybe, there may be, there's a difference in the dates of their installation of those posts, one may be grandfathered in, one may not, it hasn't been dealt with, so, you know, if you can change that now, and you would effectively be grandfathering both of them in. You'd have to be effective.
I think Hurst Federal down there, theirs, they asked for permission when we did the ARRA.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Yeah, okay, I didn't, I miss anyone.
Yeah, that's weird, so yeah.
Little Athens and Vakers.
Yes, okay, those up there.
Are those grandfathered? And like, this is for new businesses?
I don't know, I mean, I'd have to look at the exact dates, I mean, the one.
Little Athens is out there, it's for 25 years.
Yeah, but the Simon's, he's been there for a while too.
Yeah, but you want to hold this until we get that information back done?
I, well, the effect of this would be grandfathering those ones in, that exist, I don't think there'd be any question with changing it now, would.
I have no opposition to that, I mean, I, I, I'll put them there, there.
Okay.
So then the only question is where, and what, where, you want the language of what language?
I have a question about the projecting out six foot from the face of the building, are there any signs that large, that project out that far currently?
Sean Williams, Lees Shoes.
And that's the standard for a projecting sign anywhere?
Is that a pretty standard, not number six foot out?
I can't speak for other communities, but I mean, that standard was just held over from, you know, general business district, or LIC, whatever the case may be, that number was the standard for all zoning districts, and it just, we just moved it forward with allowing, that we project over the right-of-way to downtown business district at that same length.
Okay, I guess I always thought we were limited to four foot projecting perpendicular to the building, in the past.
Yeah, that's, that's six foot, six feet for projecting something, so, I mean, change that.
And we just want to make it so it didn't go.
So that's not a change of the six foot out?
The change for this is that it will not exceed 50% of the distance.
Yeah, it can't be.
Right, the change for the projecting was you guys increased the area of the sign to the 12 square feet, but still maintain that six feet projecting outward from the wall.
Okay, so where someone might have had a six by two, now we can have a six by three third.
So then you know what part of the legislation you're going to need, the law ties, in order to get that in there?
Yeah, yeah, my inclination is the exact wording, I'll think about, but in that section B, where we're already modifying it, the wording I think you want is in the downtown business district, can't be signed, shall not extend more than 50% of the area from the face of the building to the curb, and shall not have support poles.
Yeah, yeah, but I think in the, in the other section towards the beginning of that chapter, where we had the definitions, it said that a can't be post included.
When, yes.
Can't be.
There's a definition at the beginning of that.
Remove, just remove the word posts from that definition.
But wouldn't we want in here specifically where it said that there are no posts with it?
Yeah, I think that's fine, that's a good place, I think we should go back and take it out of those.
Do you want to remove posts from other districts though?
Pardon?
From other districts though, so in the general business district, and they have a can't be sign that has posts that come down and.
That would be in the right of it.
Correct, but if we remove it from the definition, then.
Right. Oh, I see your point.
So, so you want the definition to be that the can't be signs cannot have posts that are set into the right of way?
There you go, yeah, that's there.
How you pay by the word?
So, so any of this, we can still get a variance, I mean, we can go to 44.
Right.
So, let's just say some nice national company that has this specific sign that, you know.
Has to go with their building codes.
Yeah, you know, I don't know.
Like Sherwood.
Like Sherwood. I was thinking more like the Fisher's Big Boy or something down there, you know, my wife, her head down there.
I thought you were going to start.
So then you went back to the agenda for the next council meeting, or you want another draft from that?
Maybe, I mean, you're going to modify this one, modify that one part on this section B, correct?
Yeah, if you wanted it, if you wanted it for Tuesday, if you request this with the revisions for the extend, extend exceed, and no support poles in the downtown business district, I'll, I'll do it according to this.
That's suitable to.
If it's wrong, we can hold it to one reading.
Right.
Okay, I need your motion to accept these changes.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close the post, same sign, motion passed. All right, sidewalk repairs. This was brought to us by the law director, I hand it over.
He's going to turn and look at me, you know that, don't you?
And she reminded me who it was that had asked me, because I couldn't remember, but with the request was, what is the policy of provisions, and how do we go about enforcing sidewalk repairs? So this is our code section on sidewalk repairs, and it gives you the authority and duty.
I brought this subject up because of, the elementary school up there on Hop Lake, and E Street is, is one of the streets that provides kids, there are a lot of kids that walk to school now, and there are two properties on E Street.
And there are two properties on E Street, one on either side of Hopley, that have basically, I consider, non-negotiable sidewalks. The one on the north side of Hopley is, we worked with these people before to get it cleaned up. It was never a permanent, you know, cement sidewalk. It's these little square blocks and then down through there and dirt just accumulates over it and it's cracks. And so my question, actually, I sent, I'm hoping that they'd send him a letter and tell him, go get the dirt and the grass off the sidewalk, is all I was looking for, for there. But then the one on the south side of Hopley Avenue, on the state, on the west side of the street, that has just been absolutely beat up to where it's, I mean, it's, there are shards of stuff in there and pieces missing. And, and there, I know there are a lot of kids that come up E Street that head up to the, head up to the school. So I was looking that maybe if first we could get, you know, right now for something to, the property owners asking them to do something about it. But eventually, you know, this would have to be discussed and let, you know, council pan do if you wanna take it a step further than that.
We have two questions again, both for the law director. First being, is there a reason why, and I know this was, I think, from nineteen sixty-four, is there a reason why this was given to council and not, is there, would there be any reason not to give this to the property maintenance department to take on from henceforth?
No, no, no. I, I, I don't know why, other than putting it in council gives it much more of a force of law as opposed to going through litigation and, you know, dragging you out.
If your sidewalk is in disrepair, how, how do we as the council have any more teeth to be fixed than the property maintenance or support?
You, you don't, other than you have the inherent authority of the, of the state's legislative body. Once it gets passed out and they say no, the enforcement mechanism is very similar. It's the hundred dollars a day and that requires citation and going to court and getting a fine and setting it out.
I guess in my mind, I see that as being something that probably shouldn't be our concern, that we should give the property, instead of paying that department to do.
I will say this, much like many other things that happen in the city, there is not uniform enforcement because it can't be. You know, we don't take it everybody because twenty-six miles an hour through downtown. So when you have it signed, the property maintenance, you do always have that, you're picking on the defense.
Well, that brings me to my question number two. Your last sentence are at the top of the page. We could begin with the high pedestrian traffic and access to school routes. How do you alleviate the fact that, you know, why is my sidewalk on Hopley Avenue more important than my sidewalk on?
Somewhere in.
Where, where street? You know, somewhere there's a small, shorter street that doesn't go to a school?
Because there's a school there. And if it's, if it's like anything else, you enforce where the priorities are. You know, you enforce speeding in schools on tolling, you enforce it on random roads.
Would the intent be if we started that, that to, to have the goal, hitting every sidewalk in the city and at some point?
That, that's up to, that's up to you guys. And I will say, historically, I don't know that there's been anything in the last year or two, but a couple of years ago, the state did a safe, safe, what do you call that, access to schools grant or state bank stuff grant? You know, that there was a provision for homeowners to take advantage of and cities to take advantage of and do these other things, specifically for those types of sidewalks. That was two years ago. I haven't seen anything used in that sense of. Yeah, I mean, you know, I know Mr. Truca's got, you know, the one on the way to Walmart, which, you know, I agree, that's high traffic.
You know, for the kind being, I can't say that we could just put some black out there in the, in the sidewalk as a temporary repair on, on Hopley Avenue. It'd help the owner out.
And it opens up a whole can of worms.
I, I got on the internet and I looked up federal highway administration funding, and that's exactly what we're talking about. It's called Safe Roust is a School Program. And then they also have another one that's called STP. It's an urban program. And it's usually eighty percent paid by the federal government, twenty percent paid by the city. And they said that the grants are anywhere between a hundred and fifty thousand and five hundred thousand. And then the other idea was, you know, Governor DeWine now is gonna give his money back from our local government funds. Maybe we could earmark some of that money that we haven't had for years on helping one of the sidewalk repair. And then what the other one was is community development block grants that are out there, we can apply for those. And then something with the Golden Age, there's grants for seniors. Do you know anything about that? And then I think Galleon's got something going on too, where they're using some type of development funds. And then I, I subscribe to a, an Amish newspaper and anyway, there's a thing you do that with the law director, there's something called TAP funds, T A P. And that's through the state of Ohio, I believe. And that helps repair sidewalks that are in like a high, high traffic area. I would like to see city council research some of this stuff, see if we can apply for something like this instead of coming down hard on everybody. I mean, I'd rather have us take the initiative.
That's what we're looking at.
I had a question for the law director on this one, in terms of when sidewalks do get replaced, do we have like a uniform standard for how we want sidewalks to be replaced so that they're done in a certain way? Because I know some sidewalks are the old sandstone sidewalks and the width is probably much wider than you would rebuild and if you were putting in new concrete sidewalks.
Yeah, well, landed is actually good to speak to that.
They're landing.
Oh, I. Limping of things.
I only have my, my zoning code with me and that provision is actually in the building code. But yes, there are specifics to how repairs are to be made to sidewalks. Four inch in-depth material is, yes, has to be concrete. In areas where there are existing sidewalks, it's supposed to match the width of the existing sidewalk on either side, but can be no, no narrower than four feet. So there are multiple standards that they have to adhere to. I can't list them off the top of my head, but. Yeah, there is.
I know several years ago, we had somebody come in to the BZA, or somewhere on Rogers Street, they were replacing the sidewalks and they had an old tree in there, you know, and all this old tree. And he asked for permission and it's real cute, the way it goes down and it just, those are.
But the tree's gone.
And the tree's gone.
Sidewalk curves.
Yeah, sidewalk's gone with the tree, yeah. There, the tree's gone, the sidewalk's still there. But, yeah, I mean, and that was something, you know, it was just a, a quick BZA thing saying, you know, that makes sense to do at its time, you know, so.
I don't wanna start anymore on later participants. Since we're gonna, I guess, enforce this or we're looking to enforce this to try and take care of this, what will happen when we come to the situation where the tree and the tree lawn has destroyed the sidewalk?
Still. Yeah, still.
Even though the tree and the tree lawn, they cause damage to the sidewalk?
Yeah, under ordinance, I still hold our responsibility.
You have one?
I have things to talk about. The tree, in the tree lawn, which I paid to have cut down, the stub's still there. I think the roots have finally died, but it made the sidewalk going. But every time I talked about fixing it, the neighborhood kids were like, no, it's our skateboard ramp. They don't seem to mind it. But it was caused by the tree and the tree line.
Kurt Fankhauser, sixteen seventy-five South Sandusky. That TAP grant that Bruce just brought up, I was looking at that a while back and it's, it's called Transportation Alternative Program or something. And I actually thought that we could apply for that, 'cause I, I read through the whole thing and what it was all about and stuff. And they like to see it go like past a school or past a park or past a library or something like that, connecting two different things together. And the other thing that it, I've seen in there, it doesn't even have to be solely for a walking sidewalk. It could be used as like a, a walking path slash bike path. So if you, if you wanted to, you could have like a bike path go through the city somewhere along this route. And it could be dual purpose as a sidewalk too. And, and that, that might be something that, you know, could get us a nice scenic bike path going through town.
Part of that path, for a little bit, I did read about it. It said something about the high traffic areas, which could be like Mansfield Street.
I think we got several different things that you guys can look into that I don't have a lot to worry about. I won't hear you.
I, I would like to say make the motion to have him look into.
I mean, let's.
I'd like to buy the grants.
Yes.
I'll just.
I make that as a motion.
Okay. What happens? Are there any other discussions? Or if not, all those in favor of having Mr. Hill become our liaison to apply for grants? Say aye.
Aye. Those opposed say aye.
Just a little bit of writing.
Push and pass.
But meanwhile, can we get somebody to send a letter to these two places to see if we can get something done with this sidewalk?
Send a letter?
Give it a shot. The last time the guy, whoever was living there at the time went out and cleaned the one up really nicely.
Do you have the address?
I'll get them.
Will we send out a letter? And if you have the address, it's like, we're.
In the meantime, if anyone could go on the city website, city council website and put in a property maintenance issue, you know, request that the law director would go straight to the law director.
I did that.
Never mind. Moving on.
There are under insurance companies.
No. We don't prevent, we just pay after. No, it's not.
Not paying.
Not a policy.
Question from the law director, do you need legislation? City council wants to apply for grants, but I don't think we have that in our kind of place.
What I think you're gonna find out is there's gonna be a lot of information you're gonna need in order to apply for the grant or all the who, what, where's and when's, the engineering and all that sort of stuff. So my best guess is you're gonna be able to pull the information of what grants and what they need and then probably end up coming back to this body to say, all right, we need to designate this area, this will need this engineering, we need these processes and that sort of stuff. Because we'll have to look, I don't know about specifically that grant, but pretty much every one of them is gonna want drawings and, oh, just all the who, where, why.
The business point. But we don't need those questions at this point for that.
I, 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 no, because you're not gonna be there yet. You're, you're gonna.
You had to research.
You're gonna have a lot of new list of things you're gonna need for actually applying for the grant, what you've identified, what we're looking on.
All right, if there's nothing else, I will adjourn.
All right, we will call the health and safety order at six forty-five. We have a letter from the mayor of the traffic commission dated September nine to health and safety committee. Dear health and safety committee, the city beside the traffic commission would like to recommend an amendment to the traffic control map. Item one is to establish a forty-five mile per hour speed limits on both sides for both lanes of West Mansfield Street and the east side of eleven oh seven West Mansfield Street to the west side of city limits. This recommendation is based on the traffic study done by the property county engineer at ODOT. And number two is to remove the two stop signs on the northwest and southeast corners of Maple Street and Lawn Avenue. Street traffic does not stop signs have been installed to mitigate the law and area traffic. Sincerely, Jeffrey Sir Traffic. So the first one, basically from Hartland Nursing Home out to the city limits, heading westbound. One side of the road is county, the other side is city and it's very confusing. And so after the traffic study with ODOT and with the county engineer, it was determined that we have a uniform speed limit through that area. So us adjusting the traffic control map for that brings us in line with what ODOT and the county have done.
So you're saying from Hartland, so it's not, it's not any part of these?
Hart Street isn't in that.
I mean, yeah, what is that little short street called that?
Crawford.
Crawford. Crawford. Well, that's what, that's what fun one to get out of. So I mean, it wouldn't go, it wouldn't come all the way back to Crawford Street then?
Doesn't even come to figure. Yeah, from the east side of Hartland's property. Out to the, to the west side of the city limits.
Okay.
And really, you know, from, I sat in on this at the traffic commission, you know, ODOT and the engineer and the one who set kind of like what we saw with Route Four there, we just kinda have to follow, you know, formally with them. And then on the second one, to remove the stop signs on the northwest and southeast corner of Maple and Lawn, that traffic control map entry was from nineteen sixty-four. There actually are signs there. They were ones that supposedly were removed at some point back, they, what would you guess, during the Wilson administration, they had those yield signs and the yield signs at some point disappeared in the traffic control map. So this is really just updating the traffic control map to the way it is now. I'll make a motion to approve amendments or changes to the traffic control map. Have a motion for changes? I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. And the motion passes. And real quick, the ambulance district is an open discussion forum, correct? I just wanted to update everybody. We had a meeting last night with the ambulance board and the commissioners had sent out information a couple of weeks ago to all elected officials about having some discussions on the possibility of forming a county law D and S system. Really, the townships are opposed to that and I guess I can understand why because it would be a property tax and they have a lot more property, the values of their lands and things. So everybody's pretty staunchly opposed to that. So there was some discussion at the ambulance board meeting last night about what their future backup ABC plans are going forward. I just wanted to bring everybody up to speed on that. If you have any questions, feel free to give me a call or whatever. Bring them up today. And then noise ordinance is also, and you were, just maybe an update quickly on where that's at as far as. Been driving around, taking readings, trying to put together a list. Hopefully, two weeks from today, we can review that list and have some ideas of what numbers are considered acceptable. And I know a couple of us have had some conversations and I think one of the things that I'd like to see included is a timeframe too. I mean, if some, somebody's creating a hundred decibels for five seconds, I don't think we need to call the police department, but if it happens over a period of time, I think so that's something, I don't know if you have any opinion on that, something to think about, but.
Yeah.
Is there a way to write it, to word it that way, to make it so we're not chasing things around there?
There, there are, but at a certain point in time, you've really just kinda gotta rely on those reasonable standards. You can write a forty-page sign or a one-page sign or a noise ordinance. So, you know, just kinda have to fit the best of everything in there, both hard numbers and some reasonable numbers as well. And, you know, one of the other things that we brought up, I think both of you guys have brought up is sound sometimes isn't just gonna be the issue, sometimes it's vibration or all the types of things. So that's something that could be taken into consideration. or other types of things, so that's something that can be taken into consideration here.
Madam President, you were going to ask grants center, did you have a chance to have that conversation with them? Have you seen them since we talked about asking, how will we go about measuring vibrations they have?
No, I hadn't, I hadn't seen anybody or I, Bruce was here the other day, I guess, it never even dawned on me.
Just kind of curiosity, you know, when somebody has a complaint of more vibration than noise, you know, how do we measure?
That one that pulls up to the stop sign in front of my house and your whole window starts shaking that night?
Yeah.
You too? I'll have those serious ones anymore.
So, okay.
Well, you know, because that has problems because I had my neighbor who was going through some heart issues and they had some monitors and stuff on him and it sort of conflated those for a bit and put him in a bit of a banning. So, yeah, so I mean, there are other ramifications from some of this stuff.
Anything else for health and safety? If not, a recess at 6:51.
Public land noise at 6:51 will start. I guess all I have is this, you know, presented this the other day, it's a solar, a solar project that I had. And if you look, I think it's the first page or something, you can see exactly about, not exactly, but you can see about how big it is. If you look at the little trees on there, you can see where it fits in. It's not very, it's not picking up very much of that. Little bit right here. So. The consultant said if we had any questions, I could call her now. She said she's marking off the time, so I mean, if there's any questions that I can't answer, you know, or anything.
One question I had that came up about this project was not necessarily, you know, related to the numbers or anything, but just location wise, is Crowder Road the best location or would it be better to look at maybe somewhere near the industrial park?
Right.
I just was thinking if this was ever something we're pursuing, you know, the solar, you know, plus the battery stations that they have available, things like that, a lot of times they're kind of used as a surplus or backup power source for industrial parks and it can actually be very good for attracting businesses to an industrial park if they're able to provide a backup power source. So if you have a power outage large scale, if there's a source. But I don't, that's one thing I don't know is, is proximity of the panels and power station to the industrial park going to be a critical factor or not. So that's maybe something to ask, just a question that I had and I didn't have an answer to.
Several years ago, Rich Carpenter, who owned property north of Crossroads, and he was really interested in this and he was working with a company out of New Jersey to look at it. And one of the big issues with it is your proximity to the spot where you can get it into the grid. And as stupid as this may sound, up there in the crossroads was not a place to do it.
Not a good look ahead.
Not a good place to try to get it into the grid. So if they don't have the wiring and whatever up there, I can't imagine it to be down on Crowder Road.
I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, you know, just, I know you were just looking for a spot for.
Yeah, well, and the only reason I brought this to the spot, you know, we have the lady there, she was, we can do this anywhere, she says, and I'm thinking, okay, we've got this piece of land that if we sell, we're just going to get $17,000 out of it, even if we sell for a million, you know? So what, what purpose, on the purpose could we use for this, you know? And that's why I went there. I think I'll buy the, I think, I think we should have kicked ourselves in the rear end for not thinking about this when we put the new water plant in, you know? I mean, I was there, I was involved in that, I did pick up, you know? So maybe throw a couple million more on the price of it, but would we be, would we have recovered that money?
But now the technology is so much better than it would have been when that was built, so go kick yourself too.
So, yeah, well, and that's true too, you know, maybe we couldn't have done it, but no, I'm just saying, if we would've spent two million then, you know, maybe we would've saved that in the.
I think one of the other things that came up during this, there's a lot of maintenance that has to be done to those panels. The, like, the grass, whatever is underneath them, and I mean, you know, even though they may be up, they still have, that all has to be maintained because it all affects how they work. So there's a lot, Rich, I happen to be a friend of mine and we had a lot of discussions about this, and there's a lot more maintenance to this than what I ever dreamed there could, you know, there would be others, you put them up there, they're going to get the sun and they're happy.
Yeah.
But that's not true.
Two things I was going to ask is the initial investment, is that up to us to make that or do you know, did she specify their grants out there?
I had asked her about grants, I hadn't heard anything.
You know, what would be our return on that investment? How long would it take us to recover?
Well, this is, this is saying, you know, it's saying, estimated savings over 30 years with this is $1,434,000.
I just wonder is that equipment still going to be worth anything in 30 years, you know, with rapidly changing technology? That's my fear of having a large investment or something that may be obsolete in five years or 10 years is kind of scary, but you know, that's why if you find equipment that wanted to share the word of that and start a cost, that might be.
I know, I mean, I just go out of personal experience, I put on the house, you build one way down, that's my house, but you know, if I sell my house, it's going to be worth it. And I had asked that question and I think they were saying, oh, I've worked for 50 years, you know, about the, you know, how long it will last.
And then the other thing I was going to ask was maybe if you haven't thought of it yet, maybe, I know Cary, Village of Cary is one of the closer ones that I know of. Might be worth talking to them and see, you know, like Sis was saying, how much work is it to keep the area clean and are you glad you've done it 10 years after you've done it?
Yeah, I'm sure there's a lot of those out there. I guess I'm just bringing this, I'm just bringing this to say, hey, here's, here's some costs and stuff, she whipped it up or he, she had this guy there whipped this up and, oh, we got a question out of Kurt.
Yeah. Is this a net metering program or is this where you're building a solar farm out in the middle of nowhere and you're not trying to tie it into your existing meter so that you get?
This was, all I asked her for was to pay our electric bill. I went to the budget, I pulled out the city's budget and I went through everyone that said electricity, I added them up. I don't know, do you know how much you spent on electric in a year? It was over a half a million dollars.
It's been 210,000 a year on street lights.
Yeah, yeah. And I think I even had street lights in there, I don't know if I caught that, but I caught like in each department.
Well, maybe it's different for the cities, but I looked into solar myself and for like me as a personal person or a business, you have to tie it into somewhere where you have a meter on that site that you're using a lot of electricity at. Because what they want to do is they want to give you, you're using so much electricity, but if you put that back in a solar, you could net it all out to zero theoretically. And if you don't do the net metering program, you're under like a power plant program and the power plant program, and that's not the name of it, I'm just using that, like generation plant, they only pay you three cents when you're a generation plant. But if you're doing the net thing, you get 12 cents a kilowatt hour because that's basically what they charge you for.
Right.
So if, if that's the case for the city, it would make more sense for these panels to be on a property that the city has a meter where this, they're using a lot of electricity at. Because you, unless it's different for the city, I don't, I don't know. You can't give yourself a credit on another electric bill at a property. Like you, you wouldn't be able to put these panels on Crowder Road and then credit yourself across the city at another property where the city's got electric meter. Does that, does that make sense?
I understand what you're saying. I don't know, I mean, I explained this to her and she.
So like, to me, the wastewater plant and the water plant would be the two probably biggest consuming properties that the city owns that have electric meter on it.
Yeah. It's just like Sis, that we're using, we have.
Street lights.
Street lights.
And in all, in all reality, would, that, that water plant, I know it's too late now, but if it would have had a big south facing roof, that's the roof that it should have been on. But it's not angled at the right angle now.
And she, she showed us her house and it was, it was, you would have thought there's no way you could have sold it all, but, but they did. And her personal home, you know, and I think that's what got her started in this. And so it's, it's really not, if you have an east or south, you're in pretty good shape.
Well, if, if there's, even if there's like land out at the water plant that you know that the water plant's never going to extend in that direction, you could put it out there. I know you might have to mow around it, but it would make sense. And, and what it'll be is you're not gonna, you gotta set electric bill now. You would get a loan to buy this and basically you wouldn't be paying electric bill anymore, you'd be paying the same amount of money you were, were paying to pay this loan off and 20 years from now, your electric bill you won't have anymore.
That's how it works.
But it, it don't make any sense not to do it. Because if you're paying the same and then knowing 20 years down the road, you, you won't have the electric bill anymore.
We put solar on our, and this is what the guy said, I haven't set, I haven't figured out, we've had it a lot of years. When we set it up, it was 80% of our electric. We borrowed the money, you know, they gave us a loan for this and we ended up paying $13 more, you know? And then I think we paid a little more than that. But anyhow, we paid a little bit more and our bill is, is cut down. You know, I had one that was zero, one that was 70, one was, the next one was 27 and then the last one was 77, but I think that's the rule on the mayor's initial plan, it really got hot. But this summer, you know, we were.
You paid 77, I paid 200.
Yeah. But, and typically, we averaged, and that was on an average of 150 a month, we have, we just took the, took the average, so.
Yeah, but this project's looking at page seven on September the 30th. To do this project, this is what their projections were, on September the 30th, this September the 30th, they went in $52,000 for the site assessment. Now on October the 25th, they went in $263,000.
Yeah, and this is.
And then November the 13th, they went in another $210,000.
Yes.
Somehow I don't think that's going to fly.
Well, I know, and I think this is kind of the software that they have that, that would, you know, work for anyone. So, right, this is something that we budgeted, something we need to talk about.
Why don't you, why don't we have her come in and give a presentation?
Yeah, I mean, we can.
I mean, that way everybody can ask their questions and know how it works for sure and.
I can have, I mean, I just, I guess, Isaac Wether, she threw this out, I didn't want to ask her to come today because I didn't know how it would be received, but if that's what you guys want, I can get a home in there. I don't think, and that's what I go for, I don't think anything's going to have to overnight, especially here's the city government, so. Yes.
If we're wrapping up the solar part, can I ask another question about Crowder Road?
Yeah.
Let's say you find out that this solar thing has to be at another property that the city's already got that meter on and it would not make sense to put it on the Crowder Road. Would the city still be interested in selling the Crowder Road on a cash offer situation? Because there's, there's some farmland in that area coming up for auction here in about a week and judging by the price that goes per acre, I'd consider making a cash offer on that.
Well, the issue, I, I don't know, I mean, that's something that would have to be discussed through administration and not to us, but, but just my personal opinion is if, if we, if all we're going to get, the city's going to get out of it is $17,000, I think as council members, we have to do what's in the best interest for the citizens and we need to find a use for that if it's.
The idea of a dog park.
A dog park is a wonderful idea, but you know, I mean, all we're going to get is 17, and you could give us a million dollars for it and all we're going to get is $17,000 to the citizen, that's what the citizen, you know.
Million plus goodies.
We represent the citizens, so you know, we have to do them.
Try to do the rest.
Try to do the rest. So, and I'm not opposed to them getting it, you know, they're a good organization, but listen, we're sitting here representing the citizens, we have to do what's in their best interest, so. Okay, let's get off here. Any other questions?
Can I say that out loud?
Yeah.
30 decibels.
So any other questions? If not.
We're going to have a public.
Yeah, I'm going to hold up when she comes to a meeting. It doesn't matter if it's a council meeting or a committee meeting.
It would be probably done.
Okay. I ask.
Any public participation now? Any, did you have any, okay, I was kind of rushed at that point. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Still move.
All in favor? We are adjourned.